For March 25th order. First thing we'll do is the roll, Randy?
Commissioner Clark.
Here.
Commissioner Persky. Joe.
He maybe got disconnected. He is gonna be joining us. He's just not at his location, so he can't vote, but he can enter into conversation. But if you need him to officially say something.
That's okay. We can move on. Commissioner Lenzmeyer?
Here.
Okay. Commissioner Notch here. Commissioner Bertram?
Here.
Okay.
Commissioner Persky here.
Oh, there he is.
Percy's there. Okay. Now I'll have a moment of silence and the Pledge Allegiance, please rise.
Pledge allegiance to the
Fight. Of the United States of America and to the Republic of the Republic stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
For all. Okay, we'll have first action as the approval of the agenda.
So move, Mr. Chair.
Second.
Commissioner Notch moves to approve the agenda. Commissioner Clark seconds it. Any discussion? If not, all those in favor say aye.
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 Aye. Presentation of awards. I just would like to recognize Ron Mergan, the Public Works Director for Panzo for 37 years. He's retiring. He was a Public Works Director, Airport Manager, Parks and Trails, certainly involved in a lot of things over the years, and he'll be greatly missed. So I just want to recognize Ron for all his years of dedication, so.
Mr. Chair, do we have any county awards?
Not that I'm aware of. Nope. So the next item would be the consent agenda. We have items F1 through F13. Anyone want to remove anything or a motion in order to approve the consent agenda would be in order.
Mr. Chair, I'll move approving the consent agenda items.
I'll second it.
Okay. Motion's been made to approve the consent agenda by Commissioner Clark, second by Commissioner Notch. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Okay. First item of business is G1. Jody? Jody's the top of our agenda. See, sometimes you get to be the top.
Good morning, Commissioners. Item G1 begins on page 51 in your agenda packets. So in the past, I've brought to you several agreements with XL Energy related to our County Road 2 reconstruction project south of Coal Spring. So April 2nd of 2024, you approved initial agreements. It was two separate agreements with XL Energy. Those agreements totaled about $2.75 million. XL Energy has since done the full design of relocating that transmission line that was on private easement. And the new total cost is $3,694,085. It's an increase of nearly $950,000. So once we got these agreements, I had a meeting with several people from XL Energy to understand exactly why the cost went up this much. So the first first item that they brought up was they had to change to steel poles in a few places. Once they did those finalized road plans, at the time of the scoping estimate, that the final road plans for our project had not been quite completed. They don't want to use guy wire dead end poles just because the additional right of way that would be needed and the impact on the overall line stability. And they didn't want to put that amount of strain on that tangent, on those tangent structures. They had to, they had an increase in right of way costs. This is all outlined on page 51 and 52. I do want to remind you that on February 11th, 2025, we had the distribution agreement that came in less than half of the original estimate. The original estimate on the distribution lines that were on private easement was $300,000. And that actually came in just over $154,000. I don't mean to sound like that's a great bargain. I, we certainly have some concerns. Before I ask the board to approve this updated transmission line agreement and authorize the county engineer to sign, I do want to point out, we have two poles that are owned by Great River Energy on this same project. And we haven't gotten those finalized costs yet on that. We expect those to be total, I want, I want to say about $130,000. So that will be an additional cost for those lines that are located on private easement before our project. Just so you don't think I'm bringing this to you piecemeal to soften the blow because it's not very soft. So I don't know if there are any questions or you want me to go into more detail.
Well, I guess, I mean, I would assume you're sharing with them the frustration from the board. And they don't, my guess is they don't really care.
Well, I wouldn't say that they don't care. They, they sounded empathetic, at least on our meeting, and it can understand my frustration and obviously the county board's frustration. They did point out several areas where their costs came in under what they originally estimated related to their internal labor. There were a few other things.
So they're kicking us, but just not quite as hard.
That's, that's a good summary, Mr. Chair.
And I don't, I mean, with our discussions with the rural, with the co-ops and the whole thing that we tried to do, really, big picture, really didn't have any impact, like moving forward. Or do you think it, would some of those discussions and what we ended up doing, would that prevent this?
Mr. Chair, long term, that will be a benefit to the county because these poles that are placed on private easement from here forward or from the date of that ordinance change forward, they will have to be placed outside of that clear zone and then we'll just have to design around them to some extent. So we won't see that benefit immediately, but it will prevent more lines from going in private easement just outside of those 33-foot right of way.
Mr. Chair.
Commissioner Clark.
Thank you. Ms. Tyke, so for the public, why is it that we have to pay for XL choosing to use a different material? Why are they not paying the difference between?
Well, so when their line is on private easement and we are expanding our right of way, we need to pay all costs to relocate that line. Just, that's the base of it. Then with the steel poles, it would have been actually additional, several additional wood poles or stronger poles to have those guy wires holding them to keep from having too much pressure on some of those tangent poles.
And Mr. Chair.
Commissioner Clark.
I just, I thought for the public, they should know because it does seem like an obvious thing to be asking. So there's a good reason. Thank you.
Absolutely.
Commissioner Notch.
Yeah. So, Jody, just for clarification, so where the poles are now is on private easement, correct?
Correct.
So the county is expanding their easement beyond where the poles are now?
Correct. We're basically overtaking their existing private easement.
So maybe this, maybe I didn't think of this before, but why then would they need to replace their line if they're still outside of where you're gonna work?
They are currently, where the poles are located currently is at about 35 feet from center line. And that is within that clear zone of 42 feet from center line where we can't have fixed objects for safety reasons. So anytime that you are using state aid or federal aid funding, you have to meet certain safety standards. The standards are set up based on crash data. There's a whole science behind it. And that 42-foot clear zone from center line or 30 feet from the edge of the driving lane is thought to be that area, if you have your in slopes built in a certain manner and no fixed objects, vehicles that leave the roadway can recover or come to a complete stop. So anything fixed that's not crash tested, like for instance, signposts are crash tested. Anything fixed within that 42 feet from center line has to be relocated outside of 42 feet. Now, we did offer to XL Energy that they could absolutely relocate within our new right of way as long as they were 42 feet out. And that would have saved the cost of the easements. The actual easements were just over, are almost $72,000 plus the time in securing them. And obviously, they had some court costs because they did need to use eminent domain to secure at least one or two of those parcels. So we would have saved those costs certainly. But transmission lines in general, and we were told this by the co-ops as well, that like even Great River Energy, when they have their transmission lines, they do not want to be located inside of right of way because they don't want to have to pay to relocate when the time comes.
So when you say
Commissioner Notch.
away from the driving, does that mean the shoulder?
So
the actual driving?
The driving lane. So basically, the edge line on the road, they have to be 30 feet away from that minimum. So 42 feet from center line.
So then, is that road different than County Road 157?
County Road 157, the portion that is less than 55 miles an hour, you have a lesser clear zone. The 42-foot clear zone applies to 55 mile an hour zones.
Because it doesn't seem like where they're putting the new poles are.
They, they're outside of 42 feet in the 55 mile an hour zone. Now, on each end, we have lower speed zones, so that reduces that clear zone area.
Okay.
And of course, all the regulations with the federal state funding, you know, with setbacks and, you know, with the butterfly and the bats and all that stuff, it just adds costs to the projects and, you know, we do less projects. And again, if the post is six feet further out, if a car goes off the road, they're gonna hit trees, they're gonna hit an approach or, but again, I'm too practical, I'm sorry. In the language, in the agreement, and I can't remember where, but it says does not include legal proceeding, cost and labor in their agreement. And I'm sorry, I didn't see exactly where that was. But of course, that, in my world, that's an open checkbook. They're saying it doesn't include that. So does that mean it won't ever include that or they just haven't identified that yet?
I don't believe that this cost will go up significantly unless the parcel that is in eminent domain, they do have a tentative agreement, one remaining parcel, unless that cost to purchase, the actual purchase price, if that goes up, then there's a chance. And that would have, that would be ordered by the courts. So their legal costs, I believe, are covered by their legal staff. And so that's not included in here. They gave us the impression that there is a good chance, they gave us this impression before, that this could go down and they would refund money. My experience is we've not gotten refunds from XL Energy on these agreements. We have, however, from Great River Energy. So but this is what they will get, what we need to pay is the remaining balance to get us to 80 or 85% of the costs. And then they will get, bill us for the final remaining amount once they are done with their relocation.
Has, has any project, I mean, in two years I've been here, it hasn't been this convoluted?
This is the most expensive utility relocation that I've encountered in my 25 years here. We've had, in most cases, it's one or two poles and it, it's not nearly this amount of money. This is by far the most expensive. I have a feeling that we will see more of these. We are doing this next section of County Road 2 to the south of this project in a few years. And Great River Energy has poles on private easement along that entire stretch. So we will run into this again. I don't know that it will be to this amount, this extreme amount. But this is based on our meeting that we had, Commissioner Notch and I had with the co-ops. They said it, this is not completely unreasonable. Great River Energy uses about $1 million a mile to relocate transmission poles.
And my concern is, if you keep doing what you're doing, you're gonna keep getting what you're getting. So to be proactive, if there's something that we can do, I mean, because every project's gonna involve state and federal funding to some degree, I assume.
Most projects do, and we'd like to, we prefer to design all of our roads to the same standard for safety purposes, driver expectation. Drivers going down the road don't miss, they don't know if they're on a road that was funded with local option sales tax, with state aid funds, with federal funds, much like they don't know when they travel from county to county, if they're on a county road, a local road, a state highway. You know, we get calls on every level of highway in our office. Most people don't understand that. So for driver expectation purposes, we do try to keep standards uniform on county roads because all county roads generally serve the same purpose. Freight, most of them outside of cities are 55 miles an hour, and we want safe, safe standards. Similar to, you know, our approach guidelines, how many entrances we allow onto our county roads. So we try to have that consistent standard that we use, that and the fact that it's not necessarily fair to some residents to get a road that is substandard when it comes to safety standards just because we use local funding on it. But I will tell you, we've not encountered this on a project that we're using local funding.
And if we could plan with them, they're doing a major line, a line reconstruction in that Roscoe area. They're doing, I can't remember where the line's going. But if we could coordinate with them, saying, okay, these road projects, here are a five-year road plan. If you're redoing your line anyway, have we had those conversations with them?
We have, and we have committed to having annual meetings with every utility that has lines or planned lines along any county road. And we're talking about this year, instead of a five-year program, we're going to do a 10-year program. So they can plan accordingly. And actually, the first meeting was very productive. And with our new, the new language and the ordinance, we're hoping that new lines, we will be able to avoid this. But yes, we're trying to coordinate better. And, you know, we've kept them in the loop. They have access to our five-year road program. But we are going to be proactive in those conversations with all of the utility.
And just remind them that we're not excited. I'm gonna vote for it. We have to do this, but I'm gonna, I'm voting on the record in protest. Nothing against you, but against them.
Mr. Chair, they know very clearly how, I'll use your words, not excited we are about this agreement.
Okay. Commissioner Notch.
Yeah. Thanks, Mr. Chair. I'm assuming then, so like where the gravel pit is, you have to put guardrails because that's a drop off there. I don't remember if there's a guardrail there or not.
We are constructing all of our side slopes, the in slopes of the road to meet that one to four, that rise to run. And so that will push out our destruction.
So you had to buy easement on the west side too, then, I'm assuming. So this, this is maybe an 11th hour question, but so you said that this is a state aid road, correct?
Correct.
So part of the funding comes through the state?
Correct.
Is it equal about what the cost of moving the transmission line is? Or is it less?
Well, it's a combination of state aid and federal funding on this project. So between the two of them, they are slightly more expensive than relocating these lines, based on our estimate.
More expensive or they reimburse you more than the 3,000, 3 million?
Well, and state aid funding will also reimburse us for this relocation.
Oh. All right.
And again, being practical, I don't care if it's state, federal, local money. It's money.
Correct.
And that, that's the unfortunate part.
I was thinking arbitrage, you know, if you're only getting 2 million state aid, that's gonna cost us 3 million to move them. Well, let's give up the state aid and save a million bucks.
Right. So a motion, I guess, would be in order to approve the updated transmission line relocation agreement with XL Energy.
So move, Mr. Chair.
Commissioner Clark moves that.
No, that's Commissioner Notch.
Sorry.
I will, I will, I guess with reluctance, second that. And, Mr. Chair, before we take the order, if I could, I think, you know, I mean, this is, these continue to be good examples of the cost it is to try to have safety and that safety is paramount. So the practical part of me is, okay, we are trying to keep people safe. We also are trying to not do, pave things in gold, like we talked about earlier, that one of our communities seems to want to do. So thank you for the work on this, and we have proactively tried to do some things to mitigate this cost in the future. But this is, this is hard stuff. So appreciate that.
So Commissioner Notch moves and Commissioner Clark seconds it. Any further discussion? If not, all those in favor say aye.
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 Oh, same sign. And again, for the record, under protest, I voted aye.
And Lee said aye.
I said aye.
So the next item is G2, the 2025 construction update.
Yes, it begins on page 57 of your agenda packets. But I also handed out before the meeting a summary, and I could email that out as well, so you have it in digital format. But I did want this in front of you for our discussion today. Most of my focus will be on County Road 157, and I fear that I'm not gonna make your mood any better this morning. But I do want to quickly at least touch on all of these other projects, just so you and the general public knows where we stand on some of these projects. So that there is a map that corresponds to all of these projects as well that came with the handout. But so I'll start with County Road 2, the project that we were just discussing related to the transmission lines. Obviously, you know what the added cost is on that related to transmission lines. This is a federal project, so we are waiting on clearance from SHIPPO. So any federal project, we do need to review for any historic impacts. The Mendot Cultural Resources Unit saw no impacts, but they need concurrence from, and I apologize for using the acronyms, the State Historic Preservation Office. And that is expected by April 3rd. Once we have that, that will clear our Army Corps permit for wetland impacts. We are still waiting on DNR and watershed district permits, but there are really no issues that we've been told about with that. It's just the time of getting them signed and getting it out. So once we get that clearance from the State Historic Preservation Office, the plans are all ready to go and be approved. And so once we have all of that and all those permits in hands, we will be asking the board for authorization to advertise for bids. County Road 2, north of St. Stephen, from 421st Street to County Road 1. And by the way, I should just say, interrupt me if you have questions on any of this as I'm going through it. You've heard a lot about this project north of St. Stephen. We have the 95% plans completed. It looks like we will likely need to use eminent domain to secure all of the right of way. We have six parcels that remain unsigned out of 28 total parcels. We did recently get some, as an example, some correspondence where we were offering just under $6,500. The property owner wants $45,000. And we need to be responsible with taxpayer money. And so in many cases, we do need to let the courts decide on what these actual values are. Because of tree clearing issues related to northern long-eared bats and migratory birds, we can't be clearing trees after April 1st. So it looks as though this project, while we will have a bid opening in fall of 2025, will be primarily 2026 construction. Another federal project funded with safety funding and carbon reduction program funding is a roundabout at County Road 2 in Minnesota Street on the west side of St. Joseph. We're getting close to final plans. We've secured all necessary permits. We had enough right of way. So that project actually should go forward without any hitches or additional costs. County Road 40, between County Road 9 and County Road 10, south of Albany, that's in the resurfacing contract. We have two roads in that. It's County Road 40 and County Road 156. The board did award that contract to Central Specialties on March 11th. And that, that should go as soon as road restrictions are lifted. And those two roads that badly need resurfacing will be resurfaced. County Road 81 is a major full-depth resurfacing project. This is Third Street North on the north side of Crossroads Mall. It goes from 12th Avenue in Wake Park, just north of Wake Park City Hall. And there's a city park in that area, and it goes all the way to Highway 15 in St. Cloud. That will include some storm sewer upgrades and replacements of poor quality storm sewer. We're gonna do some drainage corrections and some minor signal modifications with that as well. And the board just this morning on a consent agenda approved a bid opening date of April 24th. So that work will get going right after the city, Wake Park has a city festival in June every year and right after that. So we don't cause too much disruption to them. County Road 133, this is in St. Joseph, near the Coburns and the McDonald's, O'Reilly Auto Parts, that area, it's toward the east side of St. Joe. Between 75 and 15th Avenue, near their industrial park, we are going to do a reconstruction with a roundabout at Elm Street. We had a fall bid opening. It was awarded in November, and that work will begin in June of this year. That work was delayed due to some federal timeline and right of way acquisitions, but all work will take place this year. County Road 123, I know Commissioner Bertram was at a public meeting we had for that. We're still working with plans and we're working with a few property owners one-on-one with the necessary tree clearing. We may have to have a fall bid opening depending on some of our reconstruction limits. And then the majority of that work would take place in 2026. If that's the case, we will ask to carry over that county levy funding that is used to fund that project. County Road 140 is a consultant design project, and we'll be delaying that to 2026. So County Road 157, and this is the primary purpose of this update, as much for the county board as it is for the general public. If any of you drive County Road 156 between Freeport and Albany, it runs parallel to the freeway on the north side. We had permission to remove the old railroad trestle bridge to make some safety and drainage improvements on the east or west side, excuse me, of Albany. So most of the tree clearing was completed by county forces because we knew we were seeing some of these permitting delays and we didn't want the tree clearing to cause delays related to migratory birds. Through the process of permitting, because there are a lot of wetlands that are getting impacted, the DNR identified a rare bird that likes, it's a ground nesting bird that likes the conditions that are along County Road 157, including seasonally flooded wetlands, municipal water treatment ponds. So we had to hire someone to do a study. The study will be conducted in May. It, it needs to be done between May and July, but we're gonna have it done in May to get it done as soon as possible. The study can only be done when wind speeds are less than 10 miles per hour. And this person, for just under $4,000, will make multiple trips to the site. And they have to see if they can hear or see that bird in the area. If they do find that that bird lives in that area, Wilson's Fallorope, again, you won't forget that bird's name, I can guarantee that, work would not be able to begin until after August 1st, in which case we would have to implement phasing in the project. While we're getting our Army Corps of Engineers permit, I, I do want to take a step back and point out that before we requested removing that old railroad bridge to do safety improvements to the road, we checked with Mendot's historic bridge listing, and this bridge has never been listed on any of Mendot's historic bridges throughout the state. Other trail bridges have, but not this one. So we felt we were ready to move forward. The Corps of Engineers wanted to investigate it further before they would give us a permit. So we had to hire a State Historic Preservation Office certified firm. We did seek out three quotes, just so you know, to do research on the historic. quotes, just so you know, to do research on the historic properties of this bridge as well as several culverts underneath the Wobegon Trail because they're part of an old railroad that will be replaced. We cannot get the Corps, Army Corps of Engineers permit to impact wetlands without going through this study. We should know by early April if there are any historic, if there are any properties of this bridge that would suggest a historic designation. This firm will have to work with the State Historic Preservation Office and will have to have concurrence with whatever this firm determines. She felt that she would possibly be able to find plans and if you can find plans for a bridge, generally it is not historic. That's one of those qualities where if there are no plans, this is the only way they can see how this bridge was built and put together. If we, if this gets a historic designation, it does not mean that the bridge can't be removed. So we plan to move forward with removing the bridge to mitigate some of the safety issues we have in that area. For instance, a plow cannot meet a car under that bridge because of the width that the plow would take, even if the wing is up. We have drainage issues that we can't address in that area without removing that bridge so we can get pipe in there and dig, excavate ditches that, of sufficient capacity to move that water through the area. We can't do any of that while that bridge is in place. So if the bridge is given historic designation, this project would have to be delayed where the construction takes place in 2026 because we will have additional steps that we need to go through before we can remove that bridge in order to secure the Army Corps of Engineers permit. So because of that, we had our forces clear most of the trees in there, figuring if this bridge is not designated as historic and there are no Wilson's Falla Rope nests in the area, we would be able to begin this project as early as June, probably after July 1st and we would be able to get at least that first lift of pavement on the entire stretch of road.
And what did the two studies cost, the one on the bird and the one on the historic?
The bird study will cost us $3,962. Then, again, that includes multiple site visits, listening for the birds during the morning hours. The historic review, we secured three quotes and the quote that we were most impressed with was also one of the cheapest at $17,800. On top of that, of course, I don't want to add insult to injury, but the board does know that we paid over $328,000 for wetland credits on this project.
You do know that you're creating anxiety with all of us.
I have anxiety right now, yes.
Commissioner Notch drives that road a lot. Could he just do that study on the bird when he's driving back and forth?
If he can get that certification really quickly, I think that would be great.
Mr. Chair, I was hoping he could do the historic because that costs more. And Mr. Chair, this actually is a question for Commissioner Notch. I mean, the community has obviously been looking at this for a while and that bridge. I mean, they chose not to make that a historical designation. I mean, that's, just wondering if there's any other enlightenment on this.
You, you hear a little bit from both sides?
Yeah, I was wondering.
But I, like I said, there's a couple of them. The interesting thing is, this bridge has been there for a long time. When the trees were there, nobody paid attention. Now that the trees are gone, you can see the bridge and all of a sudden it's like, you know, it, it's a care factor, but in reality, most people look at it and say, well, it hasn't been used, it hasn't been developed into a trail, you know, it really has no practical purpose anymore. And if it did, even for parks, it would be very expensive to get an engineer's opinion on if that bridge is safe to carry a snowmobile, a bicycle, a walker. Plus, over the freeway is another big span, which I'm assuming is part of MINDOT's too, I would guess, or I don't know who owns.
MINDOT owns the span that's over the freeway. We would not be removing that. We are only removing up to that connection to that steel and concrete structure that's over the freeway. There have been fires underneath this wood trestle bridge, so there are charred members. We would, our inspection is limited to, because we inspect it every year, and our inspection is limited to potential safety impacts to the road underneath the bridge. So we're not taking a look at, you know, how safe it is to be traveled on. We are simply looking, okay, is it bowing in toward the road? Are we, are there issues with erosion toward the road? Are there other safety issues? And really, the main safety issue is that narrow opening underneath the bridge for traffic. And I should also point out, this is an I-94 alternate route. If I-94 gets closed, there is signage along here to redirect freeway traffic, including large freight, wide loads on this road. So we have concerns about that as well. It's, you, if you travel the road, when I've traveled it, nobody wants to be meeting a truck underneath the bridge. Vehicles generally stop and wait for the, the wider trucks to go through and then they go. When it's our plow operators, they come to a stop if they are meeting a car because they can't assume that that car is going to stop meeting them and obviously we have to go over the center line with the fully outfitted plow.
Mr. Clark?
Thank you. Yeah, it's a lot and this, I think, is more for the public. We did at one point in the last couple of years have at least a brief conversation about this, even in the Railroad Authority. A question was, could this be turned into a trail or something else? And there was too many safety and cost issues, so that was not practicable either.
Yeah. And Mr. Chair, if you, and if you slow down and really look, you can see the Band-Aids that have been attached to that bridge over the years because the planking is obviously different than the original planking that's on there, so hopefully, after spending this money, it doesn't become a bigger expense. Time will tell.
Not sure if Commissioner Notch had a chance to tell you or not, but the, the cutting of the trees came up a couple of times yesterday on Party Line and I don't know if you shared that with her or not, but, you know, why we were doing it, why the trees were planted there and we answered them, we made up answers like you would have if you would have been there, so we did the best we could.
I, a lot of the trees on the Railroad Bank property, which obviously Stearns County has a lease over to operate the Wobegon Trail, but we got MINDOT permission to remove those trees. Just, most of them are simply because they're within our grading limits to construct ditches that will be able to handle the drainage along there. The trees in town, on the east end in Albany, many of those, the city is extending sidewalk out to the Wobegon Trail. They got an active transportation grant to do that. And so, many of those trees are impacted by that. The city's also doing some sewer and water work, which obviously involves deep excavations as well. So we are partnering with the city on this project to get it to come to fruition. One of the main issues with County Road 157 in the rural areas is the old trunk highway had an 18-foot wide concrete pavement. And because it's very poor soils underneath there, those concrete panels move every spring when the frost is coming out and they create shifts in the overall pavement, even with seven inches of botuminous on top of that concrete, where you will have lips that run perpendicular to the center line and if a car hits that full speed, it can cause damage. Our crews flag those every spring, as much for the plow operator, so a plow doesn't hit that as for, they do for the general public. But if you hit that going full speed, it's, it's a really unsafe condition. And so, the project does need to be reconstructed. I'm beginning to understand why it hasn't been reconstructed and it's only had overlays put on it in the past, but it really does need to be addressed. This project is being funded with sales tax dollars, so we can be happy that our sales tax revenues are more than we've expected and what we budgeted for. But as we develop the next road program, we're going to have to take a look at what this overall cost of this project is and how that will impact other sales tax projects and whether or not we need to have a public hearing to address those projects that are being done with sales tax dollars.
Commissioner Notch?
Yeah, and Mr. Chair, maybe one positive for XL is they did agree to move, when it came in to Freeport, to the south side of the county road instead of on the neighbors, on the yards.
I, I should, Commissioner Notch, thank you. I should give credit to XL Energy. The crews that we worked with for both transmission and distribution lines on this section of road were very cooperative and in some cases, they are paying an annual lease to put their lines on that rail bank property, so they're paying that annual lease to MINDOT so that they did not have to relocate extremely close to homes on the Freeport end. And so, thank you, Commissioner Notch. I should give credit where it's due. The crews that we worked with on this project from XL were extremely cooperative. They came and they limbed trees that were near power lines so that our crews could then take the trees down.
And that is good news, but on the same token, they're doing it to their customers. I mean, these are people who are paying their utility fees, you know, so they're doing their customer a favor by doing the right thing. So, yep, it's good, it benefits us, but that's, this is the way it should be. I mean, they, XL has customers, their customers are our residents, it's the same people, so, you know, it's what it should be, I guess. Go ahead.
And I'll move on from County Road 157. I knew that that was going to be most of the focus, but I did at least just want to touch on this. Town Line Road, which I know all of you know a lot about, they are, the townships have been seeking, the counties acting on their behalf, a federal appropriation to help cover some of those costs of their road project. So that project will likely be delayed into at least 2026 based on the fact that there were no appropriations in the continuing resolution that gets us through federal fiscal year 2025. We think we've, there's a great chance for them to get that additional earmark in 2026 and then we just have to go through the process of getting that project put in the statewide transportation improvement program and then we would be able to have that bid opening. So very optimistic, assuming a federal bill would be passed before the end of the federal fiscal year. Realistically, we will likely have a bid opening in early 2026, best case scenario on that project. And I know a lot of the general public is interested in that. In the bottom of that spreadsheet that I handed out, I went through some of our maintenance contracts and then some of the pass-through contracts, which basically that's when a township receives state funding, we have to be their fiscal agent, that's required by MINDOT. And so oftentimes, we will hold that contract, we'll award that contract and then, because we are the ones who can collect that money from MINDOT on their behalf. So we are working with four townships, as you can see on the bottom of that spreadsheet, between structure replacements or local road improvement program projects. With that, I don't know if there are any other questions. Mr. Chair?
Commissioner Clark?
Ms. Tyke, thank you for that update and just again, for the public to reinforce when we were able to go meet with Congressman Emmer in his office as well as our senators. They reinforced the commitment to making these things happen. It's just, given where things are at right now, it was not going to be this year, so it's really good to see our congressional representation willing to be working with us on projects like these, because otherwise it might not happen.
When you do the township stuff, the culverts, you know, some of those were bridges, now they're going to become culverts. Do you do everything, like the bid letting, they do the engineering, the townships?
The townships pay for design and construction inspection. The county will, basically because we get reimbursed within a week of making a payment, generally we make a payment, we put in for reimbursement. We kind of do the cash flow forum using the highway department fund balance and it's just, it makes it far easier for our staff. In some cases, the townships or small cities choose to do all of the contract administration themselves. They feel they would rather do that and that generally makes it a little bit more tedious process for us to request that funding. We can make it flow pretty quickly. And then there, because of that, there is a delay in those townships getting that reimbursement or small cities getting that reimbursement from MINDOT. This just makes it, the whole process, a whole lot quicker.
It did dampen the whole ray of sunshine and the worldly reputation that you have this morning, but thank you for the report.
And that's all I have for you today. I'm sure you're thankful that that's all I have, so thanks.
It still hurts, but thank you. Next is the Environmental Services, Shelley Benson, Angie Berg, and Teen.
Good morning, Mr. Chair. Shelley Benson, Environmental Services Director. I will be up here if you have questions and then we have staff coming for the public hearing. So we have a public hearing today to look at some ordinance amendments for ordinance 439. And Angie Berg is here and we have staff and I will have Angie introduce them and I will go sit down at, for the moment.
Thank you. Angie?
Good morning. Angie Berg, Environmental Services. I was just asking the control room if they could help me show my screen. I do have it plugged in and then we can go ahead and get started on the public hearing.
We're watching for you. I have one statement. It's plugged in, Tyke?
This is our high-tech communication.
Is it popping up?
You open the door, you, nobody can see we're not high-tech.
Somebody gets plugged in somewhere.
Your screen's on screen.
Oh, I'm displaying.
Okay, thank you, Commissioners. Angie Berg, again, Environmental Services and with me today is Rob Spitzley and Nick Newman. They are members of the land use team and are the technical staff that had helped draft this ordinance. So for any of you, I'm going to run through a PowerPoint presentation. I think that worked well when we were doing our cannabis, so we're less focused on the exact details and we can get to that later. So what are we asking today? What are, what are you proposed to review is looking at bluff standards, stormwater requirements and a few miscellaneous changes related to patios, decks and recreational vehicles. Bringing the board back to why, why do we have a county land use and zoning ordinance? Partly because we're required to for shoreline and in 2000, the board adopted a county-wide zoning ordinance to have regulations and zoning and all of the requirements that we're going to talk about today. With that, we do have our comprehensive plan, which all of you were, were part of in 2000 and we also do have many one watershed.
Mr. Chair, excuse me, just for a second, you said 2000 twice, I think it was 2020?
2000, April 20th of 2000, April 21st.
Because I wasn't in office here in 2000.
April 21st of 2000 is when we adopted the first county zoning ordinance. The comprehensive plan was 2020.
Yep.
Yes.
Just to help people know that we actually have looked at it in the last 25 years.
Right, so the comprehensive plan is shaped Stearns in addition to the one watershed one plans, which technically replaced our water plan. I know many of you are part of that as well. It's to enhance the county's water resources, recognize relationship with water quality and land use and also to protect drinking water. So with that in mind, we did look at developing some changes and we'll explain where those originated. A little bit of the process, on February 25th, the board scheduled the public hearing. That same day, we notified township, city surveyors and engineers as they were considered other interested parties. And on February 27th, the Stearns County Planning Commission reviewed and recommended approval of the changes. Side note, we also did review the bluff standards with the Department of Natural Resources. They are required to approve the change to the bluff standards, which they did. And Rob and Nick also met with Ryan Henin, our county surveyor, on the bluff standards and he also agreed that the change makes a lot of sense. So I'll take a breath and if not, if there's no questions yet, we'll move on to the bluff standards.
I'm not sure how we want to do this, but I'd say, give the overall report and then we'll open the public hearing and then we'll close the public hearing and then probably I do have a line of questions that I shared with you and Shelley, so.
And Mr. Chair, I think we all have questions.
Commissioner Clark?
We all have questions, so go.
Okay, so we'll talk about our bluff standards first. And again, many of you know this, this is also a little bit of education for the public. Why do we have bluff standards, first of all, as we're required to? But it's also to really limit the adverse development concerns and higher rate of erosion into our lakes and rivers. We, there's also additional standards that regulate setbacks and land alterations within bluffs. And again, bluffs are just, are located for purposes of this standard within 1,000 feet of lakes and 300 feet of rivers. Why the change? Why, why did we come to you with this change? There's, there's a flaw in the state rule and DNR has been unsuccessful in getting any rule changes in the last two decades. And so, there's been a bit of confusion amongst surveyors and the DNR and that's, that's one reason. and the DNR, and that's, that's one reason. The, the next reason is, is really for ease of administration. Our office does a lot of these bluff review, well, we do all of the bluff reviews, and it takes a significant amount of time to do the review the way the ordinance is currently written. This will mean a faster turnaround for property owners when people call the office and ask if a property can be developed, and is there a bluff? It's going to be a quicker review time for inquiries and also for permits. Moving on to stormwater management. Why do we have stormwater requirements? It's to reduce pollutant levels and stormwater discharge, protect water quality, and keep water on each other's property. We are, as I did address in the email to the Commissioners, and maybe this will come up, Sterns County, no county is required to have stormwater management standards unless you're in an MS4. That's a, that's a whole different conversation. That aside, in, it's not required. But I would bring you back to the goals and objectives of our comprehensive plan and the one watershed one plan commitment. There are, there are statewide standards that would apply if Sterns County didn't have any, but they're much less, and they wouldn't really have any local, they would have no local oversight. Why the change is really upon a request from some engineers over the last few years. We've been listening and reviewing and trying to understand, you know, how this would affect projects and still also meet the goals and objectives of the comp plan and, and the water plans. So, it's also to be consistent with the Minnesota Stormwater Manual. That's kind of the statewide go-to for, for stormwater. For property owners, it's going to be less cost to install. To be honest, that's probably the biggest benefit to them. Review time will also be a little bit easier. And in a simple sense, all the cross, the crossed out and redlined versions you got, really it all boils down to, it's a shift from a very strict rate and volume. So, so think of water in a rate and volume. And it's to a water quality standard instead. And so, it's a, it's an easier standard for engineers to draft and to develop, for people to meet in all soils types. And so, that's really what, what it does. Timeline on stormwater, and this is, this goes back to, again, before 2000, we didn't have countywide zoning. There was no, no formalized standard at all. I liken the standard specifically to a pendulum. And that's because we had our first standard in 2000. We had some restrictions, right? In 2007, it went to a very, very restrictive standard, and that was based on a rate and volume control for pre-settlement conditions. That didn't work so hot. So, in 2020, 2015, it changed to become a little bit less restrictive to a pre-development. And now, here we are 10 years later, looking for a water quality standard. So, again, we would be going less restrictive than we were currently, or than we are currently today, and then that, what we were in 2015 and 2007. So, just to kind of give you a little bit of a background of, of stormwater.
And to break my own rule, Angie, when you say less restrictive, it's not, it's still, it's still a requirement. It's still, it's just not as big. You were, you were making folks do a much larger holding area than what was needed. So, it's still restrictive, or it's still meeting the goal. It's just not as large.
Correct.
So, restrictive might not be the best, more or less, might not be the best way to, there still is a requirement, which everybody I've talked to makes sense. It just didn't make sense to have it be as big as it was required. And that's what you've adjusted.
Yes.
Largely, this came from, at least my involvement with the Eden Lake Township situation. Again, that, that's a good change.
Yeah. Yep. A couple miscellaneous changes. These are, are very minor. We've found there's no need in the ordinance for a definition for patio anymore. Kind of a slight change. Accessory buildings, it's to clarify that accessory buildings have to be 10 feet from a deck. It's for fire safety. And then recreational vehicles, it's clarifying kind of, well, a recent trend over the last few years, is many people want to live in the recreational vehicle while they're building their house. So, we're trying to clarify that, and also clarifying that property owners can store their RV on their property if it is licensed in their name. That is, again, something that's been very common. But the way our recreational vehicle rules are written, is this change is to make it more clear that if you're storing, it doesn't count towards one that you're using, if you will. So, with that, Mr. Chair, I do also have the draft changes on the screen. So, if there's a particular line item, page number, you have questions on, let me know. Otherwise, we would be looking for the board to hear from the public, if any, and then make a decision on the ordinance.
Why don't we open the public hearing on the ordinance amendment? Anyone here to address the board on the ordinance update? Is there anybody here? Seeing none, we can move to close the public hearing. Do we need a motion for that? No, I'll just close the public hearing. And then we'll ask our questions. Commissioner Clark?
No, why don't you go ahead and start.
No, really, I'd rather have you.
Because you've got the, you've got your list. It's okay. Thank you. Thank you. I appreciate that, but thank you.
My, my anxiety on this is that I shared it with Shelley and Angie, and of course, shared it in emails that we all got responses for and everything. You know, there, there are some good changes in here and there. But in the last, again, if you live long enough, my grandpa told me when I was eight, you're going to see a lot of things. Well, when you're on the board for long enough, you see a lot of things. Weekly, I get calls from residents about issues that they're having with not being able to do somewhat practical things. And the first thing they'll tell me is, well, staff said the board passed an ordinance or passed an amendment. And I always say, well, one, I've only been on the board for two years. Two, a lot of these ordinance comes before the board. I didn't ask for, well, the water one I did, I guess. But some of the, none of us specifically, they just come to us. Board approves it, no public input. We had one comment that I am aware of from Mr. Kroll, and that was pretty much it. So, that, that kind of concerns me. And then what happens is the public's not paying attention, and, you know, they're not zeroing in, and all of a sudden, somebody wants to put a new deck on, or someone wants to build a house, or someone wants to, you know, do a building. And they say, oh, can't do it because the board passed an ordinance in March of 2025, because of these reasons. And I've, I've been watching when we have done things. There's one ordinance here that came, I came across. There's seven amendments spanning from 2001 to 2023 that we've had these amendments. And this one is 10 pages, for example. And again, if you really, if we aren't watching for it, then suddenly something could slip through. And I don't think it's intentional, per se, but there is a different mindset. And one of the questions that I've asked is, how many ordinances does Benton County, Caneyway County, Sherburne County, Wright County have? And we haven't established that yet. That question hasn't been totally answered. But the, the response from Angie was, currently, this is more restrictive than all the other counties. But their lighter standards apply to more projects. So, begin their neighboring counties, they're all very environmental counties, just like us. There's a lot of lakes in Caneyway County. And so, that's why I asked that question. So, this still is more restrictive than those counties, Angie, correct?
Mr. Chair, members of the board, so without getting too much into the weeds, it's very much like comparing apples and oranges. So, some of their standards, their standards might be less restrictive or lighter, if you will, but they apply to more sites. Whereas our standards apply to more sites, but are a lighter restriction.
And I like apples and oranges. I'm, I'm looking for, working with the people is what, that's the reason for my, is my question. So, and then the flaw in the state rule, I'm just curious. I mean, there's 87 counties, and so there's a flaw in the state rule, but we're the only county that's correcting that, or that we feel we need to correct that with the, with the bluff?
Sure. Mr. Chair, no, we're not the only ones dealing with it. And actually, the Department of Natural Resources is going to be getting a group together to talk again about what this looks like. There's many counties throughout the state that are, that it's a challenge for. And I'm going to get the name of the group wrong, but it's like the Minnesota Association of Surveyors, you know. They're, they're called something like that. They also want to see a change. But in order for the state rule to change, the legislature has to allow it. And that has been literally, I was on the last committee, and it didn't get signed by Palenti, and that was in mid-2005. This is, I would say that we're being proactive, because again, we're going to be able to do it better and do it quicker. The other counties may be doing it that way, too, but they just didn't ask for the ordinance change. I'm not sure. But a lot of counties are struggling with this, with this bluff standard.
And I'm going to be zip in and out of these two, two issues, the stormwater and the bluff. When you say quicker, you just said quicker now. Quicker's fine, but is it going to be more restrictive? Because a lot of people have been restricted because of a bluff, or of course, the whole challenge of, is it a bluff or not, that kind of discussion. So, how I'm reading this, it'll be easier to identify a bluff. But when you say it's going to be quicker, is it going to be more restrictive?
Mr. Chair, so in some cases with landscapes, right, with land, in some cases, this will be more restrictive on how the bluff is being defined. In some cases, it won't be. It's going to depend on the property.
Okay. And then you said the DNR is reviewing the proposal currently. So, they're reviewing it. We're having our public hearing. You want us to adopt it today. They're reviewing it. So, it'll be after we approve it. Then what? When they review it, then they have to bless it, or?
Mr. Chair, since I sent this email on March 4th, the DNR did approve the change with a slight modification in, we were proposing that a bluff only apply within four times the setback instead of 1,000 feet. And they saw that as less restrictive, which it is. And so, we agreed to take that out. So, they have now given us a letter of approval.
So, the four times, that's out of here? Because that's what I read, and I was going to ask about that.
That, that.
So, now it's back to 1,000 feet?
Correct, which is consistent statewide.
Okay. And then the questions that I asked, how many ordinances do we have, and how many ordinance changes does Environmental Services ask the last five years? We'll still get those answers at some point, I assume. If I got them, I missed them. So, if you don't mind. And I'm looking at my notes. The stormwater standard, how did that happen originally? I mean, why was it so expansive? Why was it much larger? When did that happen? And how did that happen? That that, and if you can't answer a question, Angie?
Sure.
Today, I get that. But again, that comes to mind, because now we're changing it, making it less large. How did it get to where we required it to be so large? There had to be something that happened, someplace.
Mr. Chair, yeah, I honestly can't think back to probably the most restrictive standard for stormwater, but it would have been in 2007, or it was a pre-develop, or, sorry, pre-settlement. And so, I would say I could go back and watch the county board meeting, but I don't think that they were taped back then.
God, I hope you don't have to. That's could be pretty boring. I wouldn't want to put anybody through that to watch board meetings.
I mean, some of, some of these things ebb and flow, right, throughout the state. So, someone develops a really good stormwater ordinance, and everyone wants to attach to that. Or a watershed district does something, and then everyone kind of migrates to that. It's, it's, as I put on one of these first, you know, screens that I had, is we can't solve our problems with the same thinking we used when we created them. You know, we, we're, we're really doing our best to listen to the public and interested parties, make changes when, when we need to, or when you're asked to. I will think hard on that, and I'm not sure if I'll have an answer on why, other than that it happened.
And again, that's what I'm trying to prevent, I guess, is one. Commissioner, I don't know how many of us have the same goal. I, I don't want it to become overly restrictive at any point, and then us having to make it less restrictive. Like, let's try to keep it as commonsensical, I guess, as we can. Who comes up with this language? I see Mr. May here. I mean, county attorney's office drafts this, or a combination of staff, and, or how do we get the language? Again, 10 pages, very detailed. I'm not the smartest guy in the world, but certainly have a hard time.
Mr. Chair, just quickly on the 10 pages, and I'll get to mine, obviously, when you're done. But most of it's strikeout. So, I mean, and that's actually something I was going to get to. But almost all of it's strikeout language, so it'll be significantly shorter.
And, you know, that's, to me, that's part of the problem, too, is when you remove language, sometimes that can be as potentially harmful as when you add language. So, I mean, just the whole changes and the fluctuation of this is obviously concerning. And then the public input thing we talked about, the, there's a couple places that it says the additional information deemed necessary by the director. That, that seems a little loose to me. So, just, you know, when you're dealing with an issue, I mean, out of the blue, the director can say, well, no, we want more information, or there, that, that's a little concerning. I mean, like, I don't know how often that happens, but it, it's going to be allowed in here because it's new language, to talk about that a little bit. Is that in other ordinances as well?
Mr. Chair, Commissioners, it is in other parts of the ordinance. And I would say in the last, I, I would say I've never remembered the Environmental Services Director having to require a stormwater plan under that section, which says as otherwise required by. It's kind of a catch-all in case a project comes in, let's just say it's solar, or something that we haven't heard of yet. And, and we decide, oh, you know what, we really need to have a stormwater review, but yet it's not in the ordinance written that way. That's really what it's intention, intended to catch. Again, I don't, I don't think we've ever had any requirement that hasn't been specific for a stormwater management plan.
Because it says it there, and then it says it in 7.266. Again, that may be transferred by the director, approved by the director. And again, some oversight. We just want to, I think, be sensitive to that, I think.
Yeah. And as a zoning administrator, that's really what our, our job is, is, is to make decisions on some of these things. And the development projects that come in, I would say we definitely don't overuse that. That's a very, in this instance, hasn't happened.
And then the 7.26.7, the new language, when the SWIP is approved, the financial guarantees and everything, is that new, or is that just revised and put someplace else?
Mr. Chair, Commissioners, Commissioner Notch had that same question, too. That's just being removed and, it, it exists currently. It's showing up as new language because it was moved from a different part of the document. The reason for that is to make sure that when a plan's required, that it gets done, it gets done right, and that we give their money back as soon as we get an engineer sign off. That prevents a lot of these things, a lot of these cases having to go to Chad May in the county attorney's office and take enforcement. So, yeah, that's been standard. It's worked very well.
So, in the, under the bluff part, again, now, just to be clear, the slope rises at least 25 feet from ordinary earmark. Is that the stuff that was taken out on the, on the four to one, or, I don't know where this is, there's no number on this, but it was in the overall description. It says the grade of continuous, continuous 50-foot horizontal transents from the toe of the bluff to the top of the bluff in at least 18% of that section. And again, I'm not the sharpest knife in the drawer, but I don't know what the hell that means.
Mr. Chair, that is also why I have two staff with me today, because this, the bluff and stormwater are the two most technical parts of the zoning ordinance. And so, I can't know it all. Shelley can't know it all. We certainly don't expect the board to, to be able to, to go through that. If you want them to go through and give you an explanation on what that means, we sure can. We can do it in a work session sometime in the future, or we can do it before a meeting. It's up to you.
Maybe just an email to start with to all of us, just big picture stuff.
Sure.
Again, how, if, if I'm on a bluff, because, you know, my years on the planning commission, the bluff stuff came up a lot. And there's a lot of people that said, I don't think it's a bluff. And engineers said they didn't think it was a bluff, but we said it was a bluff. And then, of course, you're restricted by that. So, just the big picture question, because when I read that paragraph, it's C on, on the bluff definition amendments. Again, most people will not know what that means. And I certainly don't know what that means. So, at some point, just maybe a big picture view on what that means. I put it in a farm boy overview, if you could.
Mr. Chair, it's funny you mentioned that, because when I was, I was Googling pictures to put in the presentation yesterday, and I think it was maybe Beltrami County, or it was a county that actually has a three-minute YouTube. was a county that actually has a three-minute YouTube video that talks about bluffs. And I thought, well, that's kind of a creative way to try to explain it too. So maybe we'll, maybe we'll think about that.
I'm going to take a deep breath and let Commissioner Clark begin.
I thought you were done with yours.
I might.
You might be, you might not be. No, and I, I really appreciated the questions that you had asked. I, I think, you know, I don't personally find it unreasonable that this ordinance has changed several times over 20 years. I mean, that circumstances can be different, laws can be different, what people are looking at or bring forward or a problem that gets identified. At some point, Mr. Chair, I'd actually love to hear from Commissioner Lenzmeyer because he's kind of the, the only one who is here through all of those changes and, you know, thinking about meeting our county's needs. And there might not be a lot of input when we come up right now, but we had a lot of input in our comp plan and, you know, thinking about, you know, meeting the, the desire and the needs for clean water, but not wanting to do overkill. I think for all of us, we want to be practical. A real challenge, I think, with developing these ordinances, and I know you keep trying on this, is what's the sweet spot between getting enough information so that people can have some expectation about what they, they can do or not do, but also not making it, you know, trying to account for every single possibility because then there actually are bigger holes. So appreciate that balance. It looks like on the stormwater that we may be going to something that will be a bit easier, both for staff and hopefully for the property owners. And thinking about our investment with soil and water conservation, sometimes we talk about other counties, but we're the only county around. We're putting in a million dollars a year in addition to what they're getting from the state. It has been an incredible investment, particularly for the shoreline or egg producers that are trying to change practices where it can just not be pretty practical. I was talking to Commissioner Bertram before the meeting and our place, our lake place, which is not in this county, probably has about the same kind of steepness as the one that you showed in a picture. It can be so hard for a landowner to know and no other county around us has the, the capacity staff-wise to be helping people. So I, I think bluffs are really hard. I think hills are hard. And I'm very thankful, at least in our county, that the landowners, if they're trying to figure out how to both prevent erosion and helping with the lake water quality, have the opportunity to get some technical assistance before they're really doing anything. So we don't have some crazy kinds of things that we see on some other lakes. And Joe, I know you can't actually probably come on right now, but Joe, Commissioner Persky has really talked a lot about this. So I think having, having the, the willingness to listen to people and try to look at what could be changed as well as having to deal with frankly, the state and the feds, that all gets really complicated. So I think for me, as Commissioner Lenzmeyer talks about, this is an improvement in a point in time over what we had before. I don't, I'm guessing this won't be the end of it because water changes, people's practices change. And so we're going to have to, as part of our proactiveness, to keep listening and looking and trying to figure out if there's something else. And to Commissioner Bertram's point, the bluff, steep hill thing is really complicated and the more technical assistance we can offer to help people, the better. So I appreciate that part too. I guess those were more comments than questions because you actually asked a lot of the questions I had.
Commissioner Notch?
Yeah, just a couple of things in regards to, you know, the comment about the ordinance changes, which to me, you know, changes are good. That means, you know, not only is the county listening to what's going on, you know, they're addressing those changes as they occur. And I think, you know, part of the issue when we talk ordinances is some of them are created because, you know, probably more so in a city because residents see things and they don't like it and, and your city councils or county boards hear it and they bring it forward to staff. And I, and I think that's probably how some of these ordinances were created. I mean, some were probably created through state mandates and stuff like that. And the other thing too is, you know, ordinances are, are good and we don't like them because, you know, sometimes we want to do what we want to do, but, you know, it also prevents probably kind of a free-for-all too, where, you know, people do things what they want to do instead of being consistent and, you know, water quality right now and stuff like that is, you know, is a high priority and it probably should be for us as well because we do have a lot of lakes, streams, rivers, creeks. You know, and then the last thing is, you know, on the financial guarantee, you know, not only I think does a lot of Environmental Services have it, but I know Highway has it. If you want to put a new approach in with a Culverge or something like that, you know, they request, you know, you pay the fee and then they come out and inspect it and if it's done accordingly, you know, then they release the funds back to you. So, so I guess it's just kind of a method to make sure things are probably done accordingly. But I guess I appreciate the chance, you know, that you guys are taking and looking at the ordinances and making good productive changes and hopefully it's for the best. And I think the other thing, you know, as I had a conversation yesterday is, you know, it's not like the county hands you the ordinance because you want to do this and says, here's the application, here's the ordinance, you're on your own, come back when it's done. You know, it's probably a hand-holding and question and answer and you, your staff, I'm sure, is very good at helping, you know, constituents and county residents work through these permitting processes along with reviewing the ordinances.
Mr. Chair.
Commissioner Clark?
Actually, when you brought up the video, and hate to have you do more work, but whether it could be through us or through soil and water conservation, I mean, maybe in partnership, short videos sometimes can really help people understand a heck of a lot better. And as we keep talking about, how do people know? How can they learn? People learn in different ways. Reading an ordinance is a pretty tough way to learn something. So if there is an opportunity to do that, I think that's the kind of thing people will find value.
So obviously, a lot of input, a lot of different directions. Again, my goal, I would hope Commissioner Notch shares that with me because between his district and my district, we probably are most exposed to people saying, I mean, I get calls, as I said, weekly and I'm exhausted and Shelley and I and Mike, you know, we're going to continue to go through that process of how can we work with people, not against them, get them to attain their goals and yet not be over restrictive. I mean, that, that's the problem. There's two districts that, you know, unless they have a lake home in, in Stearns County, they don't need to come before Environmental Services because it's dealt with cities.
Unless, of course, they own property.
Unless they, that's what I said. Unless they own pop property in the rural part of the Stearns County. But otherwise, they don't have to come before Environmental Services. And then, you know, Commissioner Persky, of course, Sartell, you know, that, that's a large enough area that they do their own thing. So, so we're, we definitely, Commissioner Notch and I are more exposed to that and you may not be getting as many calls as I do, but, and it just, and there's more lakes probably in my district and that's part of the reason too. But again, my, when he says handholding, work with the resident, work through these things, you know, be, no, don't let them do something blatant, but don't say no right away. And, and so that would be, that's the only, I think, concern that I have.
Mr. Chair.
The ordinance or the number of ordinances and everything, if they were always made to work more with the people and everything, great. That's, but my, my fear is that they're going to be you or they were or have been used to become more restrictive and instead of being more cooperative. And again, that, I made my point. I, I came here, I read everything as we all, or not all of us, I'm sure it didn't, but most of us did. And, you know, I thought, well, easy thing to do is vote against it. And then when someone goes two years from now and say, well, the board passed an ordinance, I can say, no, I didn't vote for it, but I am going to support it, hoping and trusting that it's going to make it better. And again, just continue to work with residents to make it work well, is all I can say. Commissioner Clark?
Thank you. And I do think even for us, that's the balance. I mean, I do actually, people don't pay attention to lines. I maybe don't get it once a week, but I better get it every other week. I hear a lot from folks and part of what gets hard is truly that balance of we come together with input from folks to have an ordinance, to try to make sure people can be in compliance. But also, I mean, part of what I liked about our comp plan update is how we're giving people some more flexibility. What are the opportunities they can do? It is hard when somebody really, really, really wants to do something that we don't permit and there's not a lot we can do about that. So I think the, the proactive helping on the front end, it's great. Where we run into problems a lot of time is when people haven't come and talked to anybody and they've just done something. And then I'm sure you get to hear a earful about that too. So with all of that, Mr. Chair, I'm going to make a, a motion to approve the...
An Act Ordinance Number 692. Okay? Commissioner Clark?
Is that the right?
Commissioner Notch seconds it. I was, because I was on planning commission two different times, I was part of both comprehensive plans. There's people that hate comprehensive plans.
Yes.
But on the same token, it, it is a roadmap and I guess you can do it, call it what you want to call it, but very interesting process and we involve township people, you know, a vast array of people to, so that is an interesting thing. Any discussion on the motion to approve the enact ordinance 692? If not, oh, Commissioner Lenzmeyer?
Yeah.
Can we turn that volume up?
Well, I'll talk louder. I don't know if that'll work or not. Part of the frustration I'm hearing is we're attempting to create a one-size-fits-all. Well, it can't be done. We do the best we can with what we've got to work with and go from there. And also, the world is sta, isn't static. It's dynamic and it's changing all the time. So for all of those ways and needs to be accommodated, it's virtually impossible. So we do the best we can. So the frustration I'm hearing from you folks is understandable, but it goes with the job.
True.
Okay. So motion's been made. Seconded, any further discussion? If not, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Pose same sign, motion passes. Do we want to take a break or should we keep going? Take a break. We'll take a five-minute break. We'll be right back.
Thank you.
Commissioner's meeting.
You said you could do it either way.
We're going to recommit the commissioner meeting, the next item of business administration. Mike?
Yes, Mr. Chair. The next item relates to the jail justice center planning, and we have Mr. Kornick here to give an update. And then the second item regarding the jail justice center will be a closed session to have a discussion about the land acquisition for the two properties identified in the agenda. So it's twofold, a report and then a closed session to discuss the land acquisition. And I'll turn it over to Kevin.
Morning, Kevin.
Good morning, Chair, Commissioners. Kevin Kornick, head of our facilities management department. It's been, it's been a busy couple of weeks as we have been really hammering through design development. So to give you a perspective, that's about 100 bodies working on the drawings and the specifications and all the different parts and pieces. So every day, there's a, there's a significant amount of movement and the number of questions that can get generated. And, and I give a lot of credit to, to the staff here that's helping and digesting and turning those things around as fast as they can. And, and so far, overall project schedule, we're, we're right on pace. So again, we're really trying to pull things together for our April 8th board workshop, where you will see about a 50% design development set of drawings, and hopefully a little bit of a virtual tour of, of some parts of the project, and then an updated cost estimate that'll take a lot of those value engineering items that we brought to you earlier this spring, validating the work that, or some of their assumptions that they made, taking some of the square foot changes into account, really trying to get that estimate back up to speed. So...
I'm just curious, do you have any idea on the estimate? Has that changed?
Everything I have received to date says that we are on track with the value engineering as, as we had. So no parts of that haven't met or exceeded the mark. And square footage wise, we're sub 490,000 square feet. So that's a, that's generally positive. But I haven't seen any preliminary or, or draft final budget reports as of yet. So news is good.
Good.
Like I said, work continues to really identify, you know, as we've talked before, there'll be a two-bid pack project. So we'll have a bid package that'll go out for bid ideally early this fall, August, September timeline. That'll be for, in general, the civil work, the underground work, underground concrete, and the building enclosure. So think columns, beams, walls, those kinds of things. And then the jail more in its entirety. So cells and all the things that go into it. The goal is really to try to get ahead of as much inflation as we possibly can. And then those things are just long lead time items. So the faster we can get through the submittal process and get them into manufacturing, it's just better for the whole project. So. But more to come on that as we really start to drill down on what those packages are going to be. There's also been a conscious effort, and our building's actually, the way it's designed is supporting this, to break that project down into some smaller bid packages. So we may end up in a situation where we have three different electricians, or three different plumbing firms, or two different sprinkler vendors on the project. And that's really intentional, not only because the building is phased, but it also makes that project total a little smaller, where more local firms might have an opportunity to take a shot at the project. So this thing is big enough that putting everything together may very well exceed the bond capacity for some of our local firms. And it also gives us some labor diversity. So, you know, every company's got 10 staff, well now we got 20 or 30 staff to, to move the thing forward. So site utility work and the landscaping plans are well underway. We recently had a kickoff discussion. It'll have more related to general site security and sort of day-to-day operations, how we, how we move traffic, how we move people, how do we provide for some of that day-to-day site security. And then what do we do in, you know, we have an emergency situation where we need to lock the campus down further for, for whatever that reason might be. So a lot of effort going into, how can we keep it as open and inviting as possible, but still have the security that's necessary on this type of facility? Been lots of jail work, because that, most of the jail will go out on that first bid package. So there's been pre-submission meetings that have been taking place of the Department of Corrections. So far, no significant concerns from there. And it has been raised, but there's a more formal submission process and review process that has to take place before we can commit, commit dollars or contracts to hard costs. So you'll see more on that come this summer. Mechanical systems are another one that's really been hammered down. We did make a fairly significant change, moving away from a more central plant philosophy to more of a distributed mechanical philosophy. And the driving reason for that was the size of that facility. We ended up with four runs of 14-inch pipe going around the building. And actually, it was forcing the building to become taller just to fit everything into the ceiling. So we'll have more smaller equipment versus less larger equipment. But feedback from my staff, in my opinion, is it's a even trade, if not a, something that we'll be better off for in the future. So...
And I'm just curious, Kevin, like, how did that, how did that come to be? I mean, from, you know, obviously, about a year ago, it was the other thought, and now it evolves to this, which is, there's nothing wrong with that. But...
Yeah.
How did that evolve, and what else potentially could evolve similar?
Sure. No, good question, Chair. It really evolved from our mechanical engineers really diving into the, the sizing and, and code requirements of the system. So like I said, when they started running their heat loads more specifically for each of the areas, some of this mechanical equipment grew so big, it wasn't fitting between the ceiling and the framing anymore. So then it was, do we pick this whole building up afoot? In addition, some of these cooling and heating lines were getting so big, so heavy, it was actually stressing the, the structure of the building. So we would have to make some structural changes. So Kraus Anderson, in partnership with our mechanical design team, took a look at it both ways. You know, do we make the changes, stick with central plant, or do we do something different? And it was significantly less expensive to do a more distributed system. So probably plus, plus a million five in savings to go that route. So, so I credit our, our CM and our design folks for really putting the two plans out there and doing the homework on them. So... We've had a initial discussion here recently on some of the interior finishes. As you remember, last time, we put some pictures of the, of the exterior concepts, and we gave them some direction based on your feedback and feedback from internal staff and some cost information. Our direction was to proceed with our option two, which is sort of that middle of the, middle of the pack option, doing some of the same work now on interiors. So we looked at, you know, what types of surfaces are we looking for, what level of finish are we looking for? And hopefully, we'll have some carpet samples and tile samples and things like that for you guys to take a look at here on April 8th. So again, really the focus there has been what's going to last the longest, what's repairable, you know, how can I maintain it in the future? And just day-to-day, you know, how easy it for, is it for us to maintain and work with? So... I mentioned earlier, now that most of those value engineering things have been brought into the project and validated, right now, the current square footage of the main building is, is significantly under 490,000 square feet. So way back at the end of prelim spreadsheet design, we were at 570. So that's a, that's a big credit to all the staff and all the stakeholders being very realistic in, in what their needs are, and, you know, needs versus wants and balancing that ideal and practical. So that's, that's a pretty significant reduction in, in design square footage, and I'm happy to see it. Our construction management team, like you said, has been full steam ahead on pricing activities ahead of our, our next April 8th meeting. And once we get past that, then their focus is really going to be on bid packages and starting to assemble this thing to, to go out onto the streets. So we've been in several conversations with Kraus Anderson with regards to tariffs and how that's going to affect our project. And they have several industry metrics that they use, you know, from supplier updates, from more national groups that, that offer feedbacks and insight, and all the way down to their own projects that go out for bid. They bid, you know, several projects every week of varying sizes and shapes. So they got a pretty good pulse on, on what's happening. The, the last time we had spoke, the, every metric out there is telling us that there's going to be an increase, you know, across raw materials and those things that are imported. So far, the hard bid numbers that are coming back aren't showing that. In our tours that Mark and I have done with different vendors, cell manufacturers, lock manufacturers, we're just not feeling a ton of concern. Prices go up every year, and it is, it just depends on what you, what you blame for it that year. And this year, it looks like the reason's going to be tariffs. So I'll be interested to see when they get all their numbers together, what kind of recommendation they have for us to, you know, potentially, if it's a, a change in contingency allowance, or, or some kind of a hedge against what we might see in some possible tariff inflation above and beyond what we've already anticipated.
And even if the tariff isn't a legitimate reason, they'll still use it?
Yeah. My experience is they'll find a reason to add 5%. So happens every year. Like I said, more to come on that. I'll, I know they've been putting a ton of effort into trying to give us the best advice that they can with the information they have available. So... And then more on the, on our county teams' activities. We have applications out to all the entities regarding annexation of the two preferred properties. That process can happen concurrently with us negotiating with the landowners. Both landowners have been fantastic to work with and have been willing to, to help us with that process as needed, if it's, you know, signing on some applications or whatever they need to do to assist. They've been very, very, very helpful with that. So that process is about a four-month process. So more to come on that. I don't know when the first action is, but it isn't too terribly far down the road here. So... Mark Maslinkowski, the jail captain, and I have been on a, on a tour roadshow here looking at detention equipment manufacturers with the ultimate goal of being comfortable with and approving as many vendors as we can. It's an area that there's not just a ton of competition out there. So anything we can do to, to write our specs, write our bid documents, to promote as much healthy competition as, as we can, is, is going to be huge for the project. And toured a lot of really good manufacturers, the ones that do it, do a good job with it. We got a lot of comfort with what we're seeing. So I don't see, don't see any reason why we won't see some healthy, healthy competition in that area. Work continues on those specific items that are owner-supplied. So range equipments, a big one. Furniture is another big one. Wayfinding is another owner-supplied item. So those things all have a point person now assigned here from the county. And you'll start to see some separate RFP or RFU type things coming for the board for those more county-supplied items here come this summer. So range probably will be the first one you'll see, because we'll need some of their assistance in the consulting side for our architects and engineers to get the space right. The finance team, Randy and, and his team have been hard at work going through...
Fiscal advisors.
Yeah, fiscal advisors, thank you, to establish our plan for, for bonding the project. And there's a ton of factors that go into that.
Right.
You, you wanted anything to add?
Yeah, certainly the timing and the size. And if you do one issue or two, certainly we're watching the, any federal, you know, legislation on the tax exemption of bonds and try to be ready if, if that would happen. So looking over a number of factors and interviewing the various fiscal advisors and getting quotes. And at some point in the next couple of weeks, we'll probably pick one, and then we'll start with that.
Mm-hmm. Thank you. Last thing I have on my list, plans are being finalized for our April community engagement nights, with the first one being April 1st at the Cold Spring City Hall. We've seen some draft presentation materials come out, or not presentation materials, presentation boards, similar to what we had at our engagement meetings when we were working on sales tax. Also, working with our vendor on maybe a more virtual type tour of the building. They drive everything in 3D anyway, so we have the ability to more or less walk through the building. So I'm hoping they're willing to try to bring that technology to a remote site. Some, that comes with some complication, but we'll see what they come up with. I think that would be a neat way to, especially when you get into the jail or the courts or some of those more interesting areas that most people don't ever see. You can, you can stand at an officer station and understand why we're doing different things. I think that would be neat. And then we have three more, or two more coming up after that. One in Freeport and another at the library here in St. Cloud. And I don't recall the dates of those.
Mr. Chair?
April 1st, April 16th, and April 30th.
16th and 30th, okay.
St. Cloud and the 30th, and the Freeport on the 16th. And they're all from 5:30 to 7:00.
Perfect.
Mr. Chair?
Commissioner Clark?
I, I hope that they are able to, to show that. I think that will help people envision some of the complications or the rest of it. A question I have is, can they do that in a way that won't end up potentially hurting security?
Oh, I...
Just thinking about, I'm sorry, Mr. Chair, that, just thinking about, you know, if there's a bad actor out there trying to figure out, how would you get to the jail, or how would you get to the courts? I'm guessing the answer is yes, they can do that. Maybe just ask them to make sure that...
Yeah, Commissioner Bertram, Commissioner Clark, absolutely. I, you know, they won't, on the model, they don't show the rock, we hide the keys under or anything like that. So they'll be, they'll be tactful in, in what you see, and probably more importantly, what you don't see in that, that model. But yeah, absolutely.
And Mr. Chair, just the...
Commissioner Clark?
The contrast between what our jail is currently, or what the security features aren't in the courts will help people maybe have a better understanding of some of what's going to be able to be done here.
Okay. Is that it?
That's all I have.
Couple of questions I have on the infrastructure. It's come up a couple of times, saying that it might be on us. I mean, was, why would that not have been on us? It, it's like a surprise that it was on us, but am I missing something? Mike or...
Chair Bertram, when I first had a conversation with the city of St. Cloud and this, and I'll, the short answer is more my misunderstanding than, than anything. There's really three fees... There's really three fees separate from the building permit that we're going to pay the city of St. Cloud. We'll have a sewer access via water access, VSO SAC and WAC. And there's also a trunk utility charge. And my understanding of the trunk utility was just that it helps build those, that infrastructure out to your site. And upon further explanation, the, the trunk infrastructure fee from the city would address more farther downstream problems than, so if we put, you know, build our project and four miles down the road, there's a lift station that's now over capacity that serves the western half of St. Cloud. That's the intent of those trunk utility dollars is to help fix that larger infrastructure downstream that may be impacted, not necessarily that last thousand feet of, of utilities to the site. So when we put the estimate together, our assumption was the trunk utilities paid for the trunk to the site and that really isn't the case. So.
Yeah, we, in fact, we just met with city officials, some city staff members yesterday and wanted to get some of that clarified. And I think they'll work with us to make, so we can do it a little, maybe a little less expensive, but the short is that if we need a lift station, it's going to be on, on our dime. And there's larger, not necessarily public projects, but larger projects like the hospital that they end up doing that rather than the city just letting us dump into a main, which there isn't a main there right now. So we're trying to work through it, but the bulk of the cost for that infrastructure is going to fall on the county.
And when you get those, like the landscape sketch or whatever you talk about in the two last memos and the exterior, I mean, would it, would it be possible to just share that with us before we get too deep into it? And rather than getting 30 pages at the April 8th meeting, we just get little bits and pieces along the way? And then if we have comments, we could make them to you and the team kind of as we go and, you know, to take it for what it's worth. But rather than waiting until things are more etched in granite for whatever that's worth, if you can do that, that, I don't think that would hurt. And then the cost, the owner supplied, which is cost beyond the construction, you know, obviously we keep hearing the questions, we heard it yesterday, why are we spending county money on the project? You know, and we've explained that over and over again, that we're fronting the money because there's no sales tax money in the fund because it doesn't start till April 1st. So, but there are going to be dollars beyond the sales tax, which would be the owner-supplied stuff. Do we have a idea of what we're looking at with that?
Well, Mr. Chair, even though it's owner-supplied, we will pay for that with the sales tax. So it'll be part of the financing of the project.
It will be.
Yes. But you're correct, we're going to have to, we, we need the cash flow of what we've done so far because we don't begin collecting this, well, next month we begin collecting, which means we won't see any of it until later in the year. But, and that's, that's the only local or the, you know, other than sales tax dollars we're going to use, but we will pay that back as soon as we're able to. So. So it's, it's definitely, it's cash flow, it's not a use of anything other than sales tax.
But the things that are not covered by the project, is there anything, furniture or any, that we don't, okay, we don't see that? Okay?
Shouldn't, when I, my, the definition I use for owner-supplied really comes down to how we're paying the architects and the builders. So they're paid a percentage fee on cost of work. Well, the stuff that the county's doing the work on, we're not going to pay the architects and the contractor fees for that kind of thing. So that's really what, what the difference is. When you see a county supplied or, you know, it's still using the same funding mechanism, it's just we're doing the work, therefore the architect and the builder aren't going to, aren't going to see a fee for those things. So.
Mr. Chair, if you, if you all recall, we also, even in the budget, we've, we funded some of the staff that is really going to be dedicating, you know, pretty much 100% of their time the next couple of years to this project. We even funded them with the sales tax in case we need to backfill with, with county dollars.
Okay. Any other questions? If not, then we're going to evolve into the closed session part then, right?
Mr. Chair, yes, you definitely under the open meetings law have the ability to close the session when you're talking about acquiring some properties. We did the property notice, there's two, two parcels that we've talked about at our previous session. And so if we can, if you can declare that we're going to have a closed session and we'll clear the room and then we can have that. And I'll notify the back room as well.
Do you want me to state the statute or everything or can I just do closed session?
I think you can do it. It's section 13 D05 subdivision three, which allows us to close the session. So.
Okay, so I'll move to closed session.
Hopefully we'll be quick. Hate keeping them waiting.
Thank you.
Yep, see you Kevin. Thanks for your continued hard work.
Yeah.
I'll get you those couple of things. I don't know if I have elevations but I definitely have site plans. We'll get them all and then I'll keep sending the rips.
That's very helpful. The mics are back on. So are we ready? Okay, we're back in the open session. We, at this point, we got issues by commissioners. Commissioner Lenzmeyer, you have anything?
Uh, nothing.
I think that was a no. Commissioner Clark?
I think the big one is to keep reminding everybody about is what's going on with session and proposed cuts and shifts and what that would do to our residents and to our county and making sure that we continue to keep pressing forward and AMC is actually starting to work on trying to come up with some longer-term solutions on some of the human service high cost drivers. But the truth is, the state just has to go ahead and be paying their part because our property taxpayers can't afford to do what some of the options out there would result in. So if people have got good ideas, let us know.
Okay, Commissioner now?
Good, Mr. Chair.
Okay, two things. One, the airport. Obviously, we've gotten emails from other counties and wanting to have a joint meeting. Mike is gonna want some direction. I don't know how you want that direction, like in a conversation now or do you want to do it in email or however you want to do it and how and what we should do.
If it doesn't take too long, I would be fine if we did it now. Although, I know Sherburne County, they have, as you know, the airport commission came to Benton County in our board meeting and Sherburne has theirs planned for the April 15th, but you have an invitation or a request from Benton to schedule a, some kind of a joint meeting. They suggested we send a couple of commissioners.
Or the whole boards. I mean, and it was one person that did it.
You know, make some input into how you would like those to be fashioned. If you don't think we can do that today, we can put it on the next agenda as well.
Mr. Clark?
Yeah, Mr. Chair and Dr. Williams, I just think Sherburne needs to get through theirs and we certainly having a meeting together is a good thing. I think it needs to include the city of St. Cloud and we should invite everybody if we do it. I mean, I don't know that that's a problem, but Sherburne hasn't gotten through it and we obviously all have, continue to have concerns with them, so maybe it's a good thing to get together.
It might take two weeks, three weeks to get a date anyway, which would be after the 15th.
Exactly, exactly.
I would start scheduling and I don't have a, I don't have a priority. If it's a couple of members or the full boards, I could go either way in St. Cloud with or with. I don't know that the airport board needs to be there personally. I think it should be the governing boards first. That would be the only stronger opinion I have.
I think, I think we need to have somebody from the board who could speak to some of the issues we have. So I, we could, we could think about that, but otherwise honestly it could end up being just eventing session. I almost used a stronger word because we all could devolve into that. That's my opinion anyways.
It's a public, it would have to be a public meeting because there's elected officials so anybody could attend, but again, I strongly feel I don't want to hear a two-hour report from the airport.
No, no, I just think they should be there to be responsive.
They can be there, but not with the expectation probably just to answer questions, not to give us a two-hour deal, I guess would be my only concern. And then you shared the letter.
I think Steve had something on it.
I was just gonna say, you know, so they could at least listen in and hear any issues that any of the counties have or the city of St. Cloud.
And I wasn't thinking they would do any kind of a presentation, but there may be things that they need to respond to.
Sure. Just make it clear to them what their role, what we expect their role to be then. And then we all received the letter from Milk and Honey and from the county attorney and having talked to some of the township people and just my own reaction. Certainly, this kind of touched on some of the things, but the part that I will say that I was the most displeased with was in the second or third last paragraph, it said, "We also discuss the neighbor township county commissioner involvement has negatively impaired the Sherrence County's ability to successfully go forward with an enforcement action due to the appearance of bias against the establishment." That's totally off, in my opinion. Neighbors have a right to complain. Township supervisors have a right to be concerned. Commissioners have a right to respond to that. So there was no enforcement action. So I don't know how, there wasn't even an attempted enforcement action. So I, I guess again, this is her opinion, that's my opinion. This is not, I don't think this is totally over with yet, but that meeting, it's good the meeting happened, but it's, I know it's not over with yet, so, but just for the record, because we got the letter, the commissioners all got that letter, so I just wanted to share that.
Did that mean that it hindered their ability to pursue it, is how I took it?
Yep.
Right, and
Because of the bias.
And the point is Mike and I and others have had several meetings and I never got the impression that there was any attempt being made to do anything. And this goes over a year, but again, that's her opinion.
Yep. And Mr. Chair, I think, I've certainly heard enough as well that there have been a lot of feeling like there's a big swirl and it kind of goes in a spiral and maybe that's what the county attorney is referring to. That doesn't negate what you just said, but it may be that at some point, if you're just kind of going around in circles with individuals, that it's not as helpful. But I don't, I think we don't know what she means and I plan to talk to her about what she meant.
So other than that, if there's nothing else for the good of order, we'll adjourn the meeting and we'll welcome Sherrence County officers.
There is lunch in the back room if you want to take a two minute break.
Yep.